Anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
None.
No. Approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes of May 18th.
Have a motion to approve the minutes circulated for May 18th.
Second.
Seconded by Art. I made some corrections to the minutes that I don't think were in the circulated PDF. Minor items here, the school website has information for signing up for the Harrington 5K was an announcement from the treasurer's report dipping into the reserve fund, into the reserve by $65,000 instead of the budgeted $120,000. I added there.
Basically what we're saying is we're still within budget.
Yeah, we're still under budget, yeah, was the point there. Tyco there. The road crew schedule that we discussed was a four nine-hour days plus one four-hour day. Talking about the garage analysis. Voters will vote on town garage next March by the beginning of fiscal year 17. Three payments will have been made into the garage fund totaling $225,000. Roughly $700,000 will be needed to borrow at that time to build a five bay garage and salt shed facility costing just under $1 million. Just a little bit of more explanation there. Just some wording to, for clarity there. And a note that we, after coming out of executive session, we adjourned at 8:43. And then I added to the minutes the credit card policy that we added. That we, that we voted on. So any more additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended by Mitch, seconded by Tim Skagans. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 The minutes are approved as amended.
And so I will, send me a PDF of that.
Send you this.
We'll stamp it and then you can sign it.
And I'll come by and sign it.
And Judy will put it in the box.
Okay.
Just a, can, we want to add an executive session very, very brief at the end?
Yes, thank you. Close that. Yeah, just note, as I should have noted at the start of the meeting, that we have changed the schedule, the agenda, just to add unexecutive, executive session for personnel at the end. All right, after minutes comes warrants. Check warrant number 25 in the amount of $26,398.06. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Major items on this are $6,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield for insurance. Almost $2,000 to the sheriff for his contract. $1,100 to Green Mountain Power. $1,200 to Monument Electric, which was the...
The Trumbull Hill pump.
Ah, the Trumbull Hill pump work.
Yeah, it was electrical work up there.
Thank you. Sycamore Landscaping, $2,000. That's cemetery mowing. TAM, $6,300. And $1,300 to wholesale distributors.
Steve, who was that again, wholesale distributors? $1,300, was that the bits for the...
$1,340.
The bits for the greater.
Bits for the greater, all right. Any more discussion on check warrant number 25? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Motion is approved, 4-0-0.
And that light, the light bill, didn't the, the lights get all changed to ele...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that should be coming down.
Yes.
Yep.
We're expecting a 25% decrease in our...
Yeah.
Our power usage on street lighting. And that was budgeted in the...
In the next budget.
In the next budget, we did decrease our, our budget for street lighting.
It's clearer and brighter.
I've got a check warrant to Stevens Chrysler Jeep for $234.50. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch.
Yeah, the Ram shorted out electrically. We had to tow it to the Chrysler dealership in Greenwich. Everything's covered under warranty, but we had to, yeah, yeah. But for some reason Chrysler requires us to pay for the tow and then they'll pay us back for paying for the tow. It's bizarre, but, so we paid to get the truck out of Hawk and then they're going to send us a check for it.
So we'll get this money back. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Check warrant is approved, 4-0-0. Payroll warrant number 23. In the amount of $2,649.88. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. This looks like it's treasurer stipend. I'm not sure why this is a separate payroll warrant from the normal payroll warrant.
Well, what was that one for?
$2,600. 23. Payroll warrant number 23, it mentions the treasurer's stipend on here and then it's just got...
There were a lot of corrections that were made to the payroll that time. I think that they had to do it in two batches just because the company made some errors.
Oh, that payroll.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, that one, yeah.
So this was Joan had to redo some stuff.
Okay, some corrections to payroll.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Did I get, I did get a motion, a second there, losing tribe, okay. That motion for payroll warrant number 23 is approved, 4-0-0. And this is payroll warrant number 24 in the amount of $21,854.79. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve payroll warrant number 24 is approved, 4-0-0.
That little blip on the bottom of the thing, aggrating, what's this?
I'll have to read it, I can't, I don't remember.
Those before. This little... Unless it's this amount they put in there. Okay. I think that's it.
This is retirement warrant number 24 in the amount of $117.21. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All in favor, say aye.
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 Retirement warrant number 24 is approved, 4-0-0. Retirement warrant number 23 in the amount of $128.35. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All in favor, say aye.
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 Retirement warrant number 23 is approved, 4-0-0. Payroll warrant number 23 in the amount of $16,544.18. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All in favor, say aye.
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 Payroll warrant number 23 is approved, 4-0-0. Please, that's it. Thank you. Can I mind if I hold on to that? I feel naked without a pen. Okay, announcements.
Yeah, I have announcements. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to support Shasbury's Ordinary Hero. It was a great event. There was a lot of participation in town and remind everybody to nominate next year's Ordinary Hero. We got until December 31st, so start writing your letters.
And our Ordinary Hero for this year was?
And our Ordinary Hero was Kenneth Coonran, deserving, deserving individual. He was a, it was a very nice event.
It was, it was, I enjoyed being there. Any other announcements? I'd like to mention again that the Mr. Harrington Finish Line 5K is being held on Father's Day, June 21. Race start at 9 o'clock. This is to celebrate the retirement of Howard Harrington, the gym teacher at Shasbury Elementary for 31 years. We're sure going to miss him. Among the, the great things that he's done, I got to witness the other day, my daughter participated in the, the track and field event, which is a citywide nine-school participation. And Shasbury just kicked it. We won, we won just about everything, as I'm told we do just about every year. To be fair, some schools enter into the competition for, to any student who wants to run at Shasbury. It's a competitive event and we have quite a few fast runners at, at Shasbury. But it was a lot of fun and something that Mr. Harrington has been involved in since the beginning. He said this was his 32nd track and field day and it was, it was quite good. And our treasurer's son, Josiah, I meant to comment, he ran a magnificent 400, probably the only kid I saw who knew how to run a 400, which meant he saved it until the end. Every other kid was out of gas halfway around. It was, it was good to see. Public comments. Joe McGovern. Yes. Would you like to make some comments? Yeah, please come on.
I'd like to make, my name is Joe McGovern, I live at 450 Elm Street in Shasbury. And let's just think that I wanted to comment, I wanted to comment. Is there a button? Getting new chairs in July. My, the cars and trucks on my road have, the speed limit is 35 miles an hour. Coming off of Bank Street, which is 25 miles an hour, a blacktop highway. And it just seems, doesn't seem right that you're coming off a blacktop highway at 25 miles an hour onto a dirt road to 35. And it's the cross street between, right at Glansburgs and goes over to 67A. 67A changes to 40 at that corner there. There's a 35 mile an hour speed limit coming off 67A onto, that's Lamb Road, Elm Street and they come together, that cemetery. Right after the 35 mile an hour speed limit, there's another sign with a horse and it says reduce speed ahead. But that's all it says. And then there's another sign after the cemetery that says 35 miles again an hour.
So there's a warning of reduced speed that never happens?
That never happens.
Okay.
It's been there quite a while, it's kind of worn out. So it, it doesn't really make sense, it's to me. I mean, I know it takes a lot to change a speed limit, but to be coming off a blacktop 25 mile an hour road onto a 35 mile an hour dirt road doesn't seem, should be, seems to me it shouldn't be the other way around, or at least the same speed. You know, on my end, on the Elm Street end, on Lamb Road, I'm sure they would appreciate it too, but... And it's used as a cross street for people coming from White Creek, heading over into, you know, to, to the old Eagle Square, Mannequin Place, and to Daly's slash Peckham's plant, you know, which, which happens, but it seems to, they've got, it's gotten faster and faster. And a lot of people walk their dogs on that road and there are now seven children that weren't there. The Blake's house has three young girls, probably age two to nine. And, and the Rice house has four boys in it now. So there's seven kids in that short area and, you know, last month someone came around, they, they come down, they come down Twitchell Hill, which is blacktop and it turns to dirt, but they're really gaining speed. And then they come around the corner by Marilyn Kenyon's house and one car went off, almost hitting her house about a month, month and a half ago. So it's getting really kind of out of control, you know? So, I don't know about, I mean, it'd be great if you could drop the speed limit, I don't know what that takes.
Can you drop the speed limit? Is it a townwide ordinance that you have to change?
It's, it's an ordinance that needs to be changed. I think there's a number of intermediary steps that could be taken here, some of which were supposed to have been done on a complaint that we had before. And those signs were never, were never placed.
Well, one thing, I was going to say, one thing we can do is just check the records and see what the speed limit's supposed to be through there. Because it sounds like we may have lost a, a sign if there was a reduced speed ahead and then there's not a, a sign saying that the speed limit's reduced.
It says reduce speed ahead, but then when you come up over the hill, there's another sign that says 35 miles an hour. I mean, it's kind of askew, but it's there.
Yeah, we can check the length, I'm not sure that we do sign, I'm not sure which one doesn't belong there. I have a feeling that we do speed, one doesn't. But we can, we can check through. There's transitionary problems too with going from lamb to the pavement and then it turns back just, just there before you hit the bends to gravel. And we can do signage there to try and reduce that which was supposed to get done. And there's other things we can do. Changing the speed limit doesn't necessarily get what you want sometimes. But there are things like speed tables that we can be put in that are more aggressive at reducing speed. Because it keeps coming up to that bend by Dunham, that's where we're talking about, right?
Right, at the corner of Dunham, right.
Because that keeps coming up, so maybe what we need is a speed table just before there that look, slow down, because this is, this is a hump in the road.
And, or, and coming off the White Creek Road, well, it's Bank Street.
Yeah, because it comes both ways and they're cutting through. And it's a bend right there by Kenyon's, right? That's the house right on the bend.
Bend at Kenyon's and then once they come by there, it's kind of a straight shot, yeah.
Yeah, they punch it to get to the stop law sign, yeah.
And, and coming the other way.
Well, I guess if that could be...
Sheriff spends some time out at Glansburgs to enforce the 25. I would rather that they spent their time on, on that, on Elm Street and Lamb Road.
We've asked them to do that before, yeah. We'll ask them again to go over there.
Yes.
And start dealing with that and we'll work on some signage that come up that hadn't been put up.
You came in with some...
I actually, Matt Perry had a project up in Starkspur, Vermont, and it was to slow, keep, it was a neighborhood project that he got the children involved in and they made these signs. Of course, ours wouldn't say slow children, but, and it, he said it was really pretty effective. And he can make them so that they're, you know, the, so they're reflective also. And I was wondering if we made one or two and put one, I mean, what's, what's the, you know, on the other side of the street in my house, on the, under the speed limit sign, but I don't know, you can't do that probably.
You can't, you can't do that?
If I could put it on my property or something like that?
Well, I'm not going to tell you what you can't do on your property, but...
Well, we were thinking about, Matt offered to make, these are metal and, you know, if we made two, two of them anyway.
Well...
But we could put them on our property.
Yeah, that's an issue for the board, for the, for the sign post, the town sign post. Everything has to meet the, what's called the MUTCD standards.
That's what I saw.
And as we get into proper signage there, that's what we would look to have, A, enforceable and B, to really deliver the message to slow down.
Okay. Well, that'd be great.
Yeah, they, they, there are signs to work on and I think maybe we should address it that way first.
Okay.
And get some, the sheriffs over there more. Because this is, this isn't the first time this has come up and...
It's just got...
I think, you know, when, when, part of it was when White Creek was being worked on, suddenly it got discovered more.
Well, that's true, probably you're right.
Yeah, so from last summer, I think these started coming up and now people have found it and they're just...
They're just continuing on it. Yeah.
It doesn't even save that much time, but it's, I guess if you go fast enough, it saves time, so...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, probably not, but it's a...
But it is, it's from Lamb at 67 straight, straight through.
Yeah.
From your house up to Dunham or so, that's pretty narrow, isn't it?
And it's, yeah.
Very narrow.
It's narrow. There's tree coverage there and the poles are fairly close to the road and so they come down there, there's not much room.
It's kind of blind too because you've got brush in there too.
It's terrible.
Right, they did cut the brush back, which was really, you know, helps.
But there's still, you can't see any, any great distance anywhere down there.
No, you can't, no.
I wonder if we could get that speed limit...
Well, look at the speed limit and see, we see what it is and see what we can do about it and we can discuss changing it.
Yeah, well, I think we could probably set it, because it's a town road. I think what we ought to do first is check and, check and see what it's supposed to be, because I'm kind of wondering about this reduced speed ahead sign. And then call for, for more enforcement on the road.
Most definitely.
And then if you will feed back to us and see if we, if people start to slow down or if we need to go further and talk about reducing the speed limit, it's, it's something within our jurisdiction, but it's, it's a process and we have to have, you know, hearings and all of that.
But you might be able to put some other kind of signage?
Oh, yeah.
Talking about...
There's a substantial amount of signage we can put up without it looking like, you know, a highway.
Right.
But enough signs that, there's even transition signs from pavement to gravel, because some people, you know, you do start picking up speed when you hit the pavement off Lamb and then, you know, you're back into the dirt and right into the bend.
Yeah.
And we might be able to slow some people down with just some proper signage there.
All right, well, that's, that's good, thank you very much.
Good, thanks, Joe.
I wonder if when they start mowing, we could ask them to make a point, try to cut that brush back.
Yeah, we can look at the brush, and the mowing, by the way, is starting tomorrow. But we can look at the brush. From speed experience, you don't want to make a road too clear, it only entices more speed.
Oh, I know, I know.
Yeah, I do too.
You kind of got a fine line in between there.
Yeah, we'll get the sheriff up there, get some signs and...
Down the end of the road, there's a fellow has a white car and he parks it so it looks like...
Yeah.
I've seen it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. Any other public comments? All right. Treasurer's report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
I think I brought enough copies this time. I want to pass them on. Okay, again, not much is changing this time of year, but you can see the, between the last meeting, the May 13th column there and the May 29th figures. We've taken in about $5,000 in revenue, that's mostly in the form of pay as you throw and some delinquent taxes. Pretty much done with, with revenues, sorry, did I say expenditures, I meant revenues. Not much more expected to come through, I'm projecting that we're about 99.5% done, except for this $48,000 in intergovernmental revenue that we, I mentioned last time, we're still expecting that in this month, some, later this month, I hope. On the expenditure side, I'm projecting that we're about 88.5% through. We've still got two more warrants this fiscal year, but as of right now, I'm projecting that we're going to finish, finish out the year again ahead of, of budget to the tune of, I don't want to be pinned down, but maybe 70, 80,000 in that, in that range, better than the, we were expecting to dip into the fund balance by 120,000. It looks like it's not going to be nearly that much. Right now I'm saying, the number here is 26, that could change, it's got a margin of error around it.
Okay, so not much has changed since our last report?
Not much has changed. The, the, the main variances in, on the expenditure side, that if you look at the budget detail, it's mostly due to, to timing at this point. They're not real, other than the ones I've mentioned before.
They're planned expenditures, they're just coming in at the last...
Right, they haven't hit yet.
Yep.
They're mostly highway sorts of...
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yep.
Looks good.
Good. We keep trying to burn fund balance, but we just can't talk the people here at Coal Hall into spending the money. This is our third year of failure. That's not a bad thing, no. Any more questions for Melanie? Thank you. Financial coordinator position restructuring treasurer's office. Did we want to keep Melanie in the room for this discussion?
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe you should stay around for that. Not... I guess the biggest question from last week was the legal, which I sent around from VLCT, Ed Gotten, that says that virtually we can go ahead with this. The treasurer's position obviously is an elected position that stays, it would have to be a Shasbury resident. But like many other places, we can break this up into pretty much however we want it to be. I have a outline of jobs I've been putting together. We could put an ad out this week, but I'm a little uncomfortable yet in having all the details down. I want to review it with a couple of people who are, you know, specialists in accounting to, to just make sure we're, we're right with this so that when we move on, we have all everything across. I was thinking of, of putting it out to see who was out there, but I think I'd rather have a few more details before we do that, just to be specific. We're in no great rush to do this, so do it right and, and be sure. I'm going to be in Montpelier on Wednesday and there was a couple of people there I wanted to talk to, wanted some details of it. I'm at a VLCT meeting, so just pigeonhole a few people and ask them questions. And I would have a few phone calls out to a couple of other towns who have this kind of breakup. And I just want to make sure we have the correct balance and everything. So I would ask for like a postponement and posting the job until...
I, I don't think this board has ever really put to a motion that that's the way we want to go. I mean, I think that's the first thing we should do.
Yeah.
It's just the board has to agree that that's the way we want this to go.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking for a full package to, to put out here and say, this is the treasurer, this is the financial coordinator, this is payroll, this is how the structure would be. If you guys go ahead and say yes, then we put an ad out for, for the new person and we restructure with the permission of the treasurer.
And you'll, you'll get a copy of all those descriptions, job descriptions and the structure before we...
Yeah, yeah, that's why, yeah, I'm, you know, this is, lots of aspects to this. Rather have it done right once. All of you get full copies of exactly what we're talking about, how it will break up. And then, you know, we can move forward with the board's permission, the treasurer's position, permission, we can move forward and then we can advertise and see who, who's out there and who would be interested in the position.
We did, last time, we made a motion to...
You did, okay.
Okay.
Allow Dave to pursue restructuring the treasurer's office, including a financial coordinator and defining lesser treasurer duties.
Unless we want to make a motion for him to go ahead if, once he's comfortable or you want to...
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the descriptions and once you get all the package together personally.
Yeah, I could, I'll have that by the next meeting, because I don't want to go, go too far, but I'd like a few more...
Go ahead.
Answers.
Yep.
And then put, give it to everybody for the next meeting and then we can go from there.
That's good. Yeah, just now I was thinking of a question, I mean, I read what VLCT, VLCT came back with as an opinion about, you know, financial coordinator and treasurer duties. I guess the thing to make sure is that, that split between what's the treasurer, what we've traditionally asked the treasurer to do, what they're required to do statutorily versus what the financial coordinator does, that there's, that we can decide that on the fly, which is essentially what we're saying here. I want to make sure that, that we haven't established some precedent that requires more than just the select board changing what the treasurer's duties are.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to do that. That's one of the reasons why I want to wait, because I have some questions, the towns, Jericho comes to the top of my mind, one town I've spoken to. Like, they have, they've, they're doing this, so I don't want to break new ground. like, they have, they've, they're doing this, so, you know, I don't want to break new ground, I just want to take a format and make it work, work here, so, yeah.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, I read the VLCT thing and they didn't bring up any, anything that suggested, but I'd say it's worth putting the question to, if you see somebody in,
Yeah.
in Montpelier, uh, we can change the, what has traditionally been a Treasurer duty and assign it to a town employee by decision of the Select Board as opposed to,
By decision of the Select Board.
some other means.
Yeah, uh, yep, uh, that's pretty clearly what I got from that, that you can.
Let's just make sure, ask, ask a second time just to make sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, the only, the only thing, uh, yeah, there's really nothing to, to hold back, but yeah, we'll, we'll check again. And we'll move forward, that's what, like I said, I don't want to be in too big a rush to do this, because I'd rather have everything be in the right place when we do it. And like I said, with the Board's, uh, approval and the Treasurer's approval to make these modifications, then we can move forward.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, let's keep going. Any more on that topic? Okay.
We are trying to move it ahead, but better, better to do it right.
Good, thanks, Melanie.
Sure.
All right, interim road foreman, Steve Washburn.
Hey, Steve.
Steve, all right, what's it like out there? How do we survive rain for the first time in a month?
Not too bad, actually.
That's what I was thinking, uh.
Few spots where there's a little wash mark we got to fix up, but overall, we did pretty good.
Thought it looked good.
Yeah. My, uh, my brook didn't seem to rise at all in this rain, I think the,
Soaked it.
ground is soaking it all right up, yeah.
Good thing it wasn't really hard rain.
What else, uh, can you tell us?
We're still continuing to grade and ditch when we can. Looking to try to put a plan together, something to do with Potter Road, to try to make that better. Yeah, they're putting, we're putting grass seed down in the ditches, which we lost some over the weekend up on West Mountain Road. Washed it down on us. Still trying to keep up with some of the maintenance on equipment and stuff, that's what we did today. Starting to put together our road surveys, the equipment, uh, for the program that Dave is putting together.
Yeah, for the, the new, uh, programming, plant maintenance, uh, they were doing their windshield surveys on these rainy days, because we have, each road has to be surveyed and listed, so they've been doing that, uh, today and it's a good thing to do on a rainy day. Oh, and they will be going,
I'm sorry, what, what is?
Uh, for the new computer program.
Oh, yeah.
Each road has to be graded on how it is today, and that'll be the baseline, so, it's basically, it's called a windshield survey, you just drive around, you mark the quality of the ditches or the gravel surface on the paved roads, the crack, how much cracking there is, uh, if it's broken off on the edges, there's a whole list, uh, I, I sent, I sent them, there's an actual PowerPoint instructional program from the, from the state of New Hampshire on how to use the State of Maine's program, and it's, it's pretty clear, and each, each, each guy got a, I don't know how Steve broke it up, but I printed out a stack of, of these things for each guy to have, to go out and grade the roads, then I'll enter it into the database and then we can start projecting costs and time and the status of what road's the worst and what, you know, what needs to get attention. And we'll just start creating a database of repairs, I've already been putting in, when they go out and do gravel, it's marked on the sheets and I enter that into the database, so we can start, you know, when you call on, uh, Elm, because it just came up, you know, I can pull up Elm and say, on this date, X amount of gravel was put in, on this date, it was brushed, on this date, you know, I say, we can, we can tell people, you know, not, well, we did that a few, now we can just say, this is the date it was done, because Steve's providing the worksheets and,
Yep.
and they, they go in, so it's, it's very easy to use, uh, I'm eventually going to transition this over to the garage, but I'm kind of curious to get the whole thing up and running and, uh, see how it works too.
Also, starting, starting to maintain the history, other than,
Yeah.
institutional knowledge and.
Yeah, they have a database of everything. When was it paved, it was paved then, when was it crack sealed, this is when, and, uh, no stone has ever gone down on this road, well, you know, eight tons went down in the last year and a half, uh, it's just things like that, and it also will, will allow us, as I get deeper into it, to do cross projections on all the projects and everything, and prioritize things and see where we should be and, you know.
Can you, can you, uh, keep track of chlorine usage with that, or chloride usage with that?
Well, it'll, this will show which roads were chloridated when, because I am adding when, when they put down, like West Mountain was chloridated, uh, I put, I put, entered that in. The, the one thing that also the guy's doing now is, uh, you know, some of the streets are so long and, and the way they were written up on previous things was by, you know, you know, Harry's house to this house, and it's, it's like, can we get, you know, eventually, well, I'm going to get Steve a GPS so we can actually GPS mark things, so that.
So we know where fabric starts and ends and.
Yeah, it's from this coordinate to that coordinate, you know, just in case Harry moves, we'll be able to find it again, you know. You know, it's, uh, it's a good way of doing it and we're going to use that when we're doing, uh, any projects this summer too, so that we know the fabric went to this point and not, you know, go back in a couple of years and go, well, it was here somewhere.
Where's the fabric?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's the fabric?
So, and they're cheap, it's no, no big deal. Yeah, yeah, Garmin is, is really nothing, you know.
We just started around the second time and most of it, we've got most everything done once, we're definitely coming out a lot later the second time, trying to get the stone mixed in.
Oh, definitely does, yeah.
Yeah, we got some stone issues still, but can't haul, can't haul gravel to every road to resurface them all.
Yeah, that, that has been a little bit of a problem, the wash boarding with some, some of the stone.
It's been so dry too.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
We're working on it.
Get enough parts for, to get the army truck going again?
Haven't yet.
Oh, really? Still missing some parts.
You get order to, to stand.
Well, that'll be coming up later on the credit card policies, as soon as you sign it, uh, we'll have a card and I'll, I'll order the parts.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, but, but it's, it's good to get this card, because the same thing with the Chrysler, because that was a whole production, I had to get a check written and everything, where I could have just called and given the number and seen if it picked up the truck.
Fuel today, fuel today too, we got to go after our other, the truck in Williston tomorrow.
We are going to go, kid, good luck.
Yeah, yeah, so I had to come up with a hundred and seventy-five dollars so Steve could have fuel to put in the truck, because apparently not only was it a little burn, but they used the fuel too, so.
Probably put home the furnace.
But a couple of things Steve was looking at, uh, oh, we, uh, for the board, we, we did get uh, grants back, uh, we are getting the paving grant for, uh, for East Road, and that's an eighty-three thousand dollar grant to do a paving in the section of East Road. Uh, we did receive the twenty-seven thousand dollar grant to begin the engineering survey of that culvert on Shaftesbury Hollow to see if we have to spend a half million on it, or we can do it somehow cheaper.
Did you, did you mention to them that idea that I had about putting another culvert beside that one?
Well, this is the, this grant is just to get the money so that, uh, the state will pay ninety percent of the engineering cost, up to twenty-seven thousand dollars, for us to have someone go up and give us alter, alternatives. Because, uh, the half million dollars i- is.
Well, can we, can we make sure that my idea gets involved in that?
Yeah, I think everything has to be involved in that, and, and even questioning, um, the original hy- hydrology study, hydraulic study, and whether that larger structure needs to be built over what is essentially something that's not as long as my suburban. I mean, now we have to have a, a, basically a bridge over the same span, uh, which is why, with all the talk of this, which is why I want this grant, because we really don't know, is, this thing isn't collapsing, so why, what timeframe are we looking at, how long do we have to save this money, what are the construction alternatives? There's just a lot of questions before we go out looking around for three, four hundred thousand dollars, and this is just the very start of it.
I'm tired of being ridiculous, the thing survived Hurricane Irene.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Fair questions, the only thing we have is that hydraulic study.
Right.
And, and the fact that that part is rusting away underneath, but there's no suspicion that it's going to fall away or anything.
Oh, no.
So let's put the brakes on, on it and find out what the true story is, and if it's going to last another twenty years, then we can start thinking about, well, what do we do in the meantime to, uh, replace it, if there's no urgency to doing this, uh,
Right, but I mean,
Well, no, you know, and we'll protect ourselves, because, well, no, there's no collapse imminent, it's, it's.
But I mean, they can't make us put that culvert in, can they?
Not until it collapses, I guess.
Not until it's an emergent, and then if it's, if it, if it actually gets to that state, we'd probably get more money. I mean, in the convoluted way it works sometimes.
All right, but I mean, it's just, like I say, you could go in there and put in, basically it's an overflow culvert, is what my idea is.
We can't put in anything unless it's approved by the state. We can't enter the waterway unless it's approved by the state.
Well, don't put it in the water, put it to one side.
That's just changing the topic, it's the same thing.
I'm suggesting that, that if they're going to say you got to put a half a million dollar culvert in there, that it's just like an overflow on a pond, you always have an emergency overflow on the pond. You set the grade, a flat area, a few feet below the top of where the dam is, so when the water gets high enough, instead of going over the dam, it goes over here to the side, and it goes out very gradually. So what I'm saying is, if it, worse come to worse, take a culvert half the size of the one that's there, or a third the size, put it over where the water can't even get to it till it gets up at least halfway up that culvert we've got, so the water would come into the culvert and then go into the overflow culvert to the side.
Which would then go back under the road,
Which would go back into the brook.
and connect back to the brook.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I think a lot of the impetus behind the, the post-Irene culvert monstrosity idea is that, um, they pass trees, and too, too small culverts are not going to pass trees, uh, whereas the, the half million dollar culvert.
Well, you know, Tim, I could take you to a spot up on Cedar Mill Road, where it goes down through the, that brook that took the town culvert out. There's two culverts, half that size, sitting side by side, down in that swamp down there, Irene didn't even touch.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe they didn't get hit with a tree, I mean.
Well, no, they're laying right side by side.
I don't disagree, I, I agree, let's do everything humanly possible to keep from spending a half a million dollars on that culvert.
Right, I mean, that's, there's what, ten, ten houses beyond that, if that?
Yeah, but that, and that's part of why I want to get the professionals up.
Right, I mean, I'm just throwing something out there.
And, and, and I think, like I said, I think part of this is, uh, give us alternatives to a half million dollars.
Right.
Uh, and if that's a viable alternative, then, then it will be one that we'll take up.
Right.
Uh, I, I'm sure.
State will let us by all means, yes.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, it might come up that at least we get something to, uh, we'll have a point, you know, a professional opinion that we can argue
Right.
to A and R about, that, hey, look, you know, we had it looked at and we don't need to do this, because it's generated from A and R, the hydraulic study and the need to widen it, so things pass through and everything else, and. The other problem is that it has to be wider, once we replace it, it has to be wider, because it has to fit in modern standards for fire trucks, rescue equipment and everything else.
Right.
So, it's, it's, it is different in, in lots of ways, I don't know if your idea, eh, it's all speculation, I mean, I don't know.
Right, I mean, it just.
Yeah, but it's something to bring up when they get there. Yeah, which will be hopefully later this summer, early fall, by the time we bid it out, inspect it and everything. So I'm going to go ahead with East Road and Airport and right, uh, no, it's not Airport, and, uh, the Hollow, and write up, um, bids for that and get those out, um, and then we will have the final, if everything goes right to state, we'll have the final reward letter uh, in a few weeks and then we'll be able to go ahead. Uh, we were turned down for Airport Road, uh, we'd asked for, I think sixty-five thousand, it's not on there, for Airport Road, we didn't get that, uh, Airport Road this year happens to be in really good shape, so, uh, what we're going to do is Steve and I have been talking about bringing the road back in, because it's so spread out, and we have twenty-five hundred dollars that we put in for an engineer, our own engineer this year, and have him take a look at the intersection up by Cedar Mill and where, uh, Peckham's, uh, yard comes out, because that's really about the worst area now, and get some ideas and, uh, it's kind of like by Brownell's, we had the state engineers that gave us a cheap fix and it's, uh, worked, so maybe we can just do a few things and make it passable, I mean, we won't know now till next mud season, really, uh, if anything we do this summer works, because, uh, you know, that we didn't have it, it really was quite good this, this winter.
But there hasn't been any heavy truck traffic on it.
Yeah, we don't have the heavy truck traffic right now.
Keep in mind that Peckham's did say that if we had an engine, had that one engineered and designed, they would provide the materials, so I don't think it's going to cost you that much.
Yeah, when, when we get, and I think that's the key again to it, is getting an engineer, look at it, tell us what to do, and if prioritize sections. Which, which do you think we should do with limited funds, and if we, Peckham's can provide some materials, it's just that much further we can go.
Okay.
Without turning these guys into a, a construction crew, yeah.
What's that, Steve, that's where they come out of that gravel pit?
Yeah.
What, you got washerdose coming down the hill?
It just turns the holes, and it's so wide, it's really hard to get a good crown in it.
Yeah.
I'd like to try to pull it, the edges in, get back to twenty-two plus the shoulders, twenty-six feet to see if that would help it.
Starts, starts up by the gravel pit and back to the, where they put the, by culvert ends? Yep.
Yep. And then I think you mentioned Potter Montgomery.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're probably going to wait till Ju- July first just to watch the money, but, uh, Steve was figuring out some, some truckloads to put in there, just to bring it up to, uh,
To some shape to.
to decent, uh, because it, it really has some issues right now.
Okay.
Which head do you work at?
Start where the houses are. The trouble.
Alcoa trouble hill?
Yeah.
I want to thank the crew for going up to the rec, Howard Park and doing that little job, thank you very much. Something that was left half done and they did a good job.
Good. Any more questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Town Garage Discussions, Clearspan salt sheds. Couple of, uh, bid proposals sent around here, uh, let me pull those up. Okay. So this, uh, Clearspan building, I still haven't gone and looked at a picture of it yet, but apparently it's anchored by, uh, concrete dead men or, uh, shipping containers?
Or shipping containers, uh, it can be put on any foundation you want, uh, both things, because Ken had got, gotten one from, uh, Iron Horse and I'd gotten these from Clearspan, we got different dimensions, but, uh, both of these that we received don't include foundation or site work, but the site work is a wash, because whatever's going up, we're going to have to do the same site work. Uh, the foundations aren't going to be much of a difference either, because it's either the blocks or someone's going to build us a foundation. Uh, and the base for the salt shed or the storage shed would be, could be pavement, it should be an impermeable surface, so it's, uh, pavement is as good as concrete and cheaper, so we could, so we could pave the bottom of both of them. We'd have to do a little drainage work, which you'd have to do on any kind of salt shed, just to make sure where it drains to, but, uh, you know, there's a big, uh, th- these are really just to give you an idea of options that are out there, the one from Clearspan for, it totaled ninety-one thousand, was for the two buildings that I just found on an original drawing for the site, of seventy, where do I need glasses, seventy by thirty-five open shed and, uh, fifty by one hundred salt and sand shed. Both assembled on our foundation would be ninety-one thousand for both buildings. Uh, and, and, uh, the Iron Horse for a forty by forty-two came up, it, uh,
I think it was forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, thirty-five to forty thousand.
Yeah.
For this, for the same type of thing, they're all rated, we get engineering plans, so that they can all be stamped and certified as, as, uh, structural here, uh, that they would fit, but it's just another thing, uh, just using the bigger buildings that I got for the two buildings, uh, one would store equipment, I assume that's what it was originally intended for, uh, seventy by thirty-five with one closed end, and then a fifty by one hundred with one closed end, uh, here, delivered here, assembled, uh, for ninety-one thousand dollars.
A salt shed with one closed end?
Yeah.
One open end?
Yeah, one open end.
One opened end, okay.
One closed end and one opened end, and, um, you know, with the louvers and, and like.
Three sides, who we're talking about.
Yeah, 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 just so you can drive in one end, you can leave both ends open if you want, but, uh, it's best to have one end closed, just for.
But this is the one where we would keep sand and salt separate and have a separate mixing area, right?
Uh, by fifty by one hundred, you got some space to deal with. Uh, by fifty by one hundred, you got some space to deal with.
Yeah.
Uh, so you could mix inside, and you could actually put on one end, uh, you could have it closed, but you could also have a, a garage door that could open in it, uh, so that you could enter it from both ends and do the mixing. You could actually have both ends open, so you could drive, you know, bucket loader in and mix and everything.
You want a wall on the backside to push against it?
You want something to push against, if you're gonna divide it, divide it down the middle.
Or divide it down the middle, yeah, yeah.
But the way, if we're not gonna use the sand, you don't need that big building. If we're gonna use the stone like we're using.
Yeah, if, if that's the, the question that, that the board will have to do, and I've still not heard any, uh, negative responses to the proper-sized stone that we were using. Uh, and it's cheaper, and we can just leave that small pile to get us through any weekends, and then the rest of the time, we're getting it from the pit over here.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we, we had been talking about ordering, uh, a quantity of it, so that we would have it here, just in case, but, uh, you know, and our salt should go down too.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we shouldn't be using as much salt, so we might not be talking about this size structure anyway.
In twenty years, you might not be able to use salt.
In twenty years, might not be able to use salt.
Yeah.
But this is just, like I said, this is just taking these buildings that were on, on the diagram, just to put something out there as we're talking about alternative structures, that these exist, uh, they're used in many places, and, uh...
County North Bennington's got a nice one.
Yeah, yeah, North Bennington has a nice one, it's divided in the middle, you know, and he, and, and this one at fifty by one hundred, I mean, we could have a lot of stuff in there.
Well, the one that I got, Dave, from Iron Horse, that's supposed to hold six hundred and something ton of salt.
Yeah, yeah, and that would fit our entire year on one delivery.
Yeah.
I mean, next year, we'll get a better idea of how much salt we really need, since we're gone to the right-sized rock and not using the salt.
Yeah, we're not mixing anymore, so it, it will have to go down.
So it'll be definitely.
Yeah, if we're just using salt.
On the paved roads now.
Paved roads, and we're not mixing it with sand.
Should be just about.
We don't need a building that has a, a salt and a sand pile and a place to mix them, which I think was what the original garage proposal was. It was a, uh, a thirty-six hundred square foot building, so.
Yeah, well, the other thing is, Tim, we were figuring out, you will use less salt if you got the sand, or salted sand undercover, 'cause you don't have to put so much salt in it.
Yes.
But if we're gonna use the stone like we have done, per se, and then.
Well, I figure we gotta go through at least one winter to find out.
Right, right, but I mean, that.
Couple months.
You know, all you need is enough when Daley's not open, to have on hand, that's all.
And also, if we get into pretreatment, that's also less salt.
Yeah.
Which, uh...
Beach use or whatever.
Yeah, beach use terms.
Yeah, well, remember, the schedule that we're on right now has us making a, a garage decision before we get all the way through the next winter, 'cause we've got to, uh...
Garage.
Do we have to, you know, get our, our ducks in a row and decide what we're gonna go to the voters with? Um, but like Dave said, uh, the, using the small stone on the gravel roads seemed to work, uh, in our test this year, and, uh, other towns use it, as a matter of course. Um, I think probably the real take home here is that, um, given that our salt usage is very likely going down, uh, the original garage proposal, which had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar salt shed in it, big enough to, uh, have salt and, and sand and a place to mix them and, and, and a loader driving around, uh, maybe we don't need that.
Do, do we have an idea of how much salt we put on the dirt roads versus the paved roads?
Uh, I...
Or is it half-fifty, fifty?
I, oh, no, no, no. I, I would think most is going on the, on the paved roads, but I would really have to defer to Steve, who's left. I, I wouldn't wanna, I don't know that, that kind of figure.
I mean, that would, that would...
Yeah, the salt on the, uh, on the dirt roads is just to keep the sand loosened up, right?
Well, yeah, all you do, on the, on the dirt roads, Tim, all you do is, you, well, actually, sometimes you don't even use salted sand on dirt roads. If it's right around freezing or above, you'll just use plain sand. Because then, the thing is, if you put salted sand on the frozen road, or on the snow, and it gets above freezing, it drops right down through the ice and snow on top. Then when it gets cold at night, the cars drive over it, it glazes right over, gotta go sand it again.
Yeah.
Right.
Which was the benefit of the stone.
And if, if it's below, like, around zero or something, then you have to use the salted sand to make it stick like sandpaper.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some trouble with the right-sized stone at Daley's?
Yes.
They, we were, we were not getting what we really wanted. Now, would Daley have it there if we asked for it?
Well, yeah, they, they, we need to, uh, uh, work out the details of having it around.
Okay.
But that's just a matter of, of ordering it, and...
Yes, okay.
We had talked about a, a group order of a couple of towns, uh, on Peru, I almost said Peru, uh...
Manchester.
Dorset, yeah, Dorset and Manchester, I believe we're getting further, further up, uh, but that we can certainly arrange to get it. It's, it's a certain size, but it's not impossible to get.
Yeah, okay.
But if we're not mixing salt and sand, if we go with the stone idea, uh, we need just salt storage.
Right, but it don't spoil, Tim, if you buy it this year and you don't use it, as long as it's covered, it'll still be there.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, a smaller building just hold one salt pile than to hold three piles, right?
You could lay it out, well, I put blocks in there, you can separate it off if you wanted to.
No, I'm just saying, we, we, if we're going with the stones, we're not gonna need as big a salt shed.
No, absolutely not, no, no.
And so, uh, looking at, uh, the, uh, thirty-five by seventy is probably more building than we need then.
Yeah, if we're not gonna be...
Thirty-six by thirty-six is probably closer to what we need, and that number is, uh...
No, it's just a...
Oh, no, let me, what are the numbers here? Well, let's skip down to the easier one.
Now, now, didn't...
Ken's building was forty by forty.
Wasn't the original...
And that's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Wasn't the original salt shed a lot higher than the sixteen feet high at the edge, top of that crown? Did, wasn't it much higher than that, so they could go in there with the...
Well, sure, because the wider you make them, the higher they go. I don't remember what they were on the original one, Mitch.
Yeah, I think they were like twenty...
They was, that was a really good side building.
But just, uh, order of magnitude on the, on the garage project, uh, the, all the numbers that you've seen in the spreadsheets that I've shown before had a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar salt shed.
That's right.
Um, we're looking at, you know, possibly, you know, thirty-five, forty-thousand-dollar salt shed. Uh, so we've just saved a hundred thousand dollars on the, on the cost of the garage facility.
And even on the second shed in here, it, it's not something that would, like this pole shed or the shed that's here for, it's not something that needs to be done immediately, because it's for storing equipment during the winter. We still have a great deal over here at, uh...
Absolutely.
You know, we're paying two hundred dollars to store our graders and everything else inside. Uh, you know, so here's a way to look down the road and go, well, we have this, we can do this for a while before we have to worry about outdoor storage. And, you know, frankly, I know many towns and contractors that would leave these out anyway. Uh, but for two hundred dollars, we're putting them in the garage.
Yep.
So it, it's another way of, of making a reasonable proposal if they, if we wanted to delay on, on one part of something.
Yep, okay.
Mm-hmm. So we're, you know, just back-of-the-envelope kind of numbers, you know, our million-dollar garage is now a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar garage, and we're gonna have two hundred thousand saved up by, uh, middle of next year. We're looking at financing seven hundred thousand at this point.
Yep, okay.
Without finding anything else to, to shave.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
These salt sheds, there seems to be a large difference in the amount of money that they cost. You said a hundred-and-fifty thousand for one, and you have another one for thirty-five to forty thousand?
Different sizes, totally different sizes.
Yeah, I realize they're different sizes, but, um, the construction of them, are they comparable in the materials that they're made of? It's, you know...
No, they're different. Uh, the, the, what we were talking about before was a building, a, a steel, or just some sort of skin building, uh, big enough to have, uh, three, three piles, uh, salt, sand, and a mix. And now we're looking at, uh, a much smaller one, just enough to store salt in, and this one that's thirty-five thousand dollars is not, it's, it's more like a tent, really, right, than a building.
It's got the canvas, canvas roof.
Yeah, we, we, we put down a floor of asphalt, and then we put down cement blocks to anchor the sides and create the wall, and then there's a, essentially a tarp stretched over the top of it, uh, that, uh, that protects the salt from the, from the elements. So it's a, it's, it's a lot less of a building.
Fifteen years versus seventy-five years, you know, that, fifty, twenty, no, the building itself, fifteen year on the cuts, on the, on the roofing part.
Oh, sure, okay.
Fifteen to twenty years, so they say, and then you'd have to replace that.
Okay, so that is replaceable, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that tarp is not the whole thirty-five thousand dollars, it's the, you know, the, that's a smaller part of that.
Skeleton, the skeleton part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, again, the idea is we're, we're always talking about using less salt, and the state's talk, uh, getting us to think about using less salt, and we're, we've been talking about other products, even for the paved roads, uh, that you can spray on as a pretreatment, so, um...
Yeah, I think the salt's gonna become a big issue now that they've passed this new water bill for, uh, the whole watershed.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a very...
Yeah, so the whole idea that, you know, we even want to build that big a monument to salt is, is going away.
What's the capacity of what we had at, at Stanley Tool?
Sixty or eighty.
Was it three, three loads?
Yeah, that was, that was three loads over there.
About a hundred tons then?
About a hundred ton over there, 'cause we had sixty in here.
Okay.
So we only had a hundred and sixty on, on tap at one time. And actually, we operated the whole winter off the sixty ton here. I mean, we, we only got into that, uh, towards the end of the season, just to start using it.
When you knew we had to empty it.
Yeah, just to start using it. And now, uh, I mean, uh, so we did really well. The, you know, it was to guard against the shortage that never occurred.
Absolutely, yep.
So...
Not that we only used sixty tons of salt, but we were able to fill it.
Yeah, we just kept this, we just kept getting deliveries, so we never really had to go over there in a pinch, uh, so it worked out. I would anticipate doing the same thing again next year, uh, until things change, just to have the backup.
Yep, okay.
Didn't need it this year, but, see about next year.
All right, item eleven, award bids for Howard Park Tennis Courts. Deena Rugi, Parks Committee, I bet you're here to talk about that.
No, I was just here to listen, actually, because, um, we had met at, do you want me to sit up there?
Yeah, please.
It doesn't matter. The surprise chair.
Put a warning on that chair.
Oh, brother, okay. Um, we had met as a rec committee on May twenty-second at one o'clock in the afternoon, and we had looked at three different proposals for dealing with the tennis court issues. And we had looked at the Vermont Recreation Surface and Fence Company, and the Vermont Tennis Courts Surfacing, and Advantage Tennis. And each of those companies had given us very nice proposals. The Vermont Tennis Courts Surfacing had given us two proposals. One of them was a more complex, complete, dealing with the tennis courts than the other one was. The other two companies, uh, the Advantage Tennis and the Vermont Recreation Surface and Fence, also gave us proposals, but they were not as detailed or complete as the Vermont Tennis Court Surfacing. Um, I had dealt with the gentleman over at Vermont Tennis Court Surfacing a few years ago, and he had come down and looked at our courts and said, for their age, whoever originally, um, put down those courts really knew what they were doing, 'cause he had never seen outdoor courts that were in such exceptional shape. And, um, so then he was explaining to myself and one of the other committee members, I guess it was about three years ago, um, exactly what he would be doing to the courts in, in terms of prep work, and then dealing with the cracks and resurfacing, and, um, dealing with the painting and the lines, and just everything that they were gonna be doing. We were really, really impressed with them. We couldn't afford them at the time, but we said we'd keep their number, which we did. So, um, since we had gotten the grant, the matching grant from the state, we called them back down, and we got the two bids from them, the two proposals, and we also got the proposals from the other two companies. Um, we had decided, um, that we really, we really thought that the Vermont Tennis Courts Surfacing Company was far superior in terms of the proposal that they had given us, the itemized list of how they were gonna be approaching everything, in terms of prep work, in terms of sealing, and painting, and lining, just everything that they were gonna be doing soup to nuts. We had absolutely no questions about how they were going to be doing this, and warranty work, you know, everything, everything was covered. And we said, you know what, even though they are the slightly higher of the three companies, that is the one that I would, that I would go with. And, um, my other committee member, Helen Olney, also agreed with that, and when we were comparing notes, Dave said that that's exactly the way he was leaning also. So that is what the Recreation Committee recommends, that we go with the Vermont Tennis Court Surfacing Company.
They said they had two proposals.
Yes, there was the higher of the two, was the more complete one, and we said, you know, for a few extra dollars, you know, let's not be penny wise and pound foolish here. And Dave should have the proposals if you would like to take a look at them.
Although all...
Never mind.
The cheaper proposal has, I believe the cheaper proposal was just one less coat of, uh, something...
There was something going on there, yeah.
The coats of elite color.
Yeah, that's the less expensive one.
And then, uh, here we have, uh, two coats of elite color.
One coat of elite fill.
Elite fill.
And three coats.
And three coats of elite fill on the areas that are repaired for cracks.
Yep.
I make the motion, we go with the, uh, the recommendation by the Rec Committee, sign, sign the contract with these.
We have a motion from Art Whitman to accept Vermont Tennis Court Surfacing for, uh, resurfacing the tennis courts to the amount of, uh, twelve thousand, six hundred and one dollars.
You had a second here.
Second from Ken Harrington, discussion?
Haven't, haven't cracked that amount on the...
Which one?
Twelve thousand, six hundred and one, oh, zero, zero, zero.
Extra zeros, I didn't even...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I was sorry, even.
Oh, my.
Well, that went up a little bit.
Definitely, I don't think the state will go with a matching grant for that one.
Yeah, yeah. Twelve thousand, six hundred and one dollars is the number.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the bid from Vermont Tennis Court Surfacing is passed by four zero zero.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As long as Dean is here.
Yes.
I don't know if we can do this, it's not, not, wasn't on the agenda, it was supposed to be at the Water Board about the water quality in the park. If we can get into that now or wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, I, let's, let's talk about it. We should have mentioned it at the top, but.
Yeah, I, I thought we would, we'd go through it, we ran out of time at the Water Board meeting, that's really what I intended to bring it up.
Yeah.
What, there's no pressure, or what's the problem?
Well, the problem is that we, that we've got a high coliform meeting, which is not unusual, the well shut down through the winter. However, appears to be, this is why it's better in the Water Board, because Joe and Jim can give you more details on, on the history of this, apparently it's been going on for quite some time. The, a drainage stream basically runs right next to the shallow well, it's only twenty feet deep.
Twenty feet.
Basically surface water almost.
It's a pond.
And the question was, we, we only test it once a year, and it began to be a question of what's going on the rest of the year. And because people are using it, and let me point out, this has nothing to do with the Water Department. The Water Department was only asked to help the town some fifteen years ago with the water at the park. This is not the Water Department water, this is from the town's private well at the park. So, they've been testing it, and this comes up periodically, and Joe and Jim both recommended a UA cleaning system where the water would pass to an ultra, UV, sorry, UA, UV system to, to kill any bacteria in it. I had, I had one person look at it, another person is gonna look at it. It requires a water softener because it's too heavy, I don't want it to, to go through the UV right now. The whole system would cost about four or five thousand dollars. We also discovered that we have to change the plumbing because the plumbing runs directly from the well into the first bathroom, then into the second bathroom, and then into the room where the equipment would be. So, it has to be diverted straight into the equipment and then lines reversed to go into the bathroom equipment. There's a long-term maintenance cost with all this equipment, which brings up the question of why don't we drill a real well? Then that brings up questions, are we, you know, we have to have some kind of hydrology study, Jim was telling me before, to see what is down there. I wish I, he was here to explain this better than I can.
Would you have to go through, probably get a WW permit just to have it on file, you'd have to file something over the state.
It's gotta be something.
If we're drilling, yeah, if we're drilling a well, we have to, we have to get a WW permit. But what I was thinking is, is I'm gonna make contact with a couple of well people and see if we even just, you know, this is just plain a bad idea. But, you know, let's, we'll look at the options, I'm gonna have the water tested periodically by the water company. We don't have any fountain now, but I'm sure people are filling their water jugs from one of the sites. There isn't any imminent thing, but it's, it's kind of okay, we have a water issue, a potential water issue, we have a state grant. I contacted the state and I said, this wasn't one of our original projects, but it is the water source for the park. If we use some of the state money to improve our water, would it be a problem? And they said, no, just send them a letter saying that we're doing this. It would crimp a few other projects, but again, thanks to the Lions, we do have some spare, we have some wiggle room here. So, if, if we're talking about a five thousand dollar project and the state will pick up twenty-five hundred, maybe now is the time to do it instead of waiting till, you know, it really does turn, turn bad. It's not a big issue now, but apparently it's been a issue for years, so we have an option now to.
Lack of use in the wintertime, you're just in a spring and so forth.
And heavy rains will change the volume because it's so shallow and everything else. So, may, maybe this is the time because we have, we can get half of it paid for to address it.
Yep.
It, like I said, it will cut into some other things, but as I said, the, the Lions and other groups have stepped up, especially the Lions have stepped up to make more money available because they're, they're taking on projects to improve the park, so. You know, I will continue, I have another estimate coming on the water softener and UV system, and I'll get some well people in here to see if we have any hope of, I don't know exactly how they go about that business, but we'll see if there's any hope of what that would cost. I mean, that could cost much more, maybe less, who knows, than, than the UV system, we'll take either option.
It'll be less maintenance than the UV system.
Well, that's, see, that's the other thing with, with the well, if we can put a well down deep enough, we won't have any of these issues, and we won't have to have a UV system, and we won't have to maintain it every year. This thing has to be turned on and turned off by the company every year and, and serviced. So, I mean, you know, that, that's into a annual expense now. But if we're gonna have a park and we're gonna have water and we're gonna be encouraging people to use it, we should, we should investigate this a little bit.
Yep.
But again, there's, there's nothing wrong now, it's the startup issue, but it's a question of what goes on during the course of the year. And, you know, in, in your own home, you would deal with this one way, but we're a municipality, so we need to make sure this is right all the time. So, we'll have it tested in the interim here, we don't have a water fountain, so that cuts back some, but we certainly want to have the ability for people to get water while they're exercising.
Well, if, if they, if you're gonna drill a new well, Dave, wouldn't you wanna pull it back up the hill more?
I, I will listen to whatever the well people tell me.
You would need, you would have to have an engineer tell you where they're.
Wherever the water is, let them drill.
Where they, the water delivers.
I'm just thinking, because that's right down by that brook down there.
Yeah, well, that's, I think that's basically.
Like I said, if you pulled it back up the hill.
Yeah, I think that's basically the problem with a twenty-foot shallow well is, it's the running water over here coming from down the hills, not the best location. But yeah, I'm not, you know, if the engineer says, put it, you know, nine hundred feet that way, it's like, okay, we'll put it nine hundred feet that way.
I don't think you'd have to go quite that far.
But that's, that's the, you know, that's why we'll call them and see what they have to say. And either way, like I said, the, the big benefit now is we happen to have this grant, and maybe, I got an interesting estimate on a roof today, so, you know, maybe we can work everything still.
Yeah.
You know, but at least we're only being paying half for the water project.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twelve, Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Ordinance.
Okay, this is just, oh, Dean, this is for you.
Oh, for me? A gift.
I think this is that guy, but it came in on a different name. Yeah, but it doesn't have his name on it, it has somebody else's name. Anyway, we were, it's a side topic there. The Solid Waste Ordinance, we didn't receive any appeal to it or anything, so it will be adopted with the signed copies is on file that we signed back in April, I forgot we did sign that, so. We are pretty much done, it will be adopted, Mike was asking for copies of it today, so I'll try and get a signed copy up to him tomorrow, and. Did he let her agreement, or what was the other one?
He will be having a, a public hearing, like, the dates have been going back and forth, but it'll be sometime in June and you'll get in, there'll be at least fifteen days notice of it, and it's for the whole alliance, the kind, the whole thing, and we'll be having a public meeting on that, and I believe it'll be at Arlington. I hope it's not the same week in our second meeting here. Now, this is, we, I don't know when it would, I have to look at my emails again. But it's coming up and it'll be posted.
And then we're, we're pretty much.
We gotta get the, I've gotta get the form for the registration.
Yeah.
And I have a couple copies, we can go look at them at the next meeting and decide which one we wanna use.
Yeah.
I'll send them out, I'll send them to you and you can put them in the drop box.
Yeah, yeah, just send it, I'll get it to everybody, and then we'll proceed from there on this.
Okay.
So, we're, we're done for here, and as I said, nobody appealed, so.
Okay.
Ordinance goes into effect on the sixty-first.
All right, good, done, done. Item thirteen, insurance proposals.
This is just to, our insurance is annually renews, it's been town, town procedure or accustomed to do this every three years. So, Dave Newell at, at Wills is working on our renewals, and we've been going back and forth on it. And basically, that's it for the, you know, at the, he will be coming in in a week or two to go over the different packages with me, and then we'll bring it up to the board. And the board would like David here to, to talk about any of it, he could come here.
In the past, he's come.
Okay, then he, I would expect him at the next meeting? And we'll just review, it's basically just renewing all the policies we have, there's, there's no real change, and I wouldn't imagine much change in the expense. But renewing the insurance is a, is a very complex thing, and it's been custom here, about every three years you do it. And they've been providing the insurance for the town for, you know, years and years.
We compared with V L T C last time, it was not nearly as favorable as what we.
Yeah, Wills came, was significantly less expensive.
Yeah.
We've had good service for them, from them for, forever, so we have no reason to change.
Yeah, and our truck fiasco this year, you know, everything's going well on our end, it's not going so well on the other people's end, but it's, it's been going well on our end, so.
But Wills has taken care of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's nothing, you know, so, yeah, I have no complaints in anything that's happened with them.
Yeah, okay. Sheriff's Contract.
Uh, we can skip this, the sheriff's contractor did not arrive in time for this meeting.
Okay.
He was gonna send it to me, but he hasn't gotten it to me yet.
All right, so it'll be on next meeting.
Yeah, we'll just put it on the next meeting.
We have to approve it by July first?
Yeah, by July first, and I, I was speaking to Chad early last week, and he thought he'd have it to me by tonight's meeting, but it didn't.
Is he gonna come in or is he just gonna send it back?
No, he's just gonna email it to me, we, we talked about changing it to twenty-five hours with the emphasis on Howard Park. We discussed the fully trained law enforcement officer and what that means, because I've been questioned about that, and all, all the patrol officers here are fully certified law enforcement officers in the state, so it's, it's all fine. But I did specify, one of the things we're looking for is hours, especially at night in Howard Park, because we're spending money in there, we want the park to look nice, and we'd like to keep people out of it, so, you know, that'll be taken care of.
Lions Club is taking on the project of putting cameras, and they're gonna be, can go right to the sheriff's computers in their cars live.
Really?
And they can prosecute if they can identify.
Oh, cool. Is someone, I asked Bill Hardy about that today, I was asking if, if there was anything he had on, on the systems that are being talked about, because I don't know if there's any expense for the town involved in this, or.
Just electricity.
Just electricity?
So, the Lions is going to supply cameras for us?
Yes.
Nice.
Oh.
We aren't gonna put money on there unless it's secure, and so we've taken it upon ourselves to, to do that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Wow, that's very generous.
Yes, it is.
Good, okay.
But I checked with Chad, and he says it goes, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be live, and they can, they can pull it right up on there.
They know how to deal with the, the feed?
So, on their car from there, so there's supposed to be a Wi-Fi connection type thing there?
Right in their car, it's live, and, and, and of course, they can record, it can be recorded, and they can prosecute. If a positive identification can be made, it can be used as prosecution.
Is it, is it a continuing loop, and if they aren't there and they have to come, you know, I mean, you say live, it's not wherever they are, they gotta be in the proximity, or for where, from wherever they are, they can see it live?
Can answer that.
Well, it'd be digitally recorded, the way they normally work for us, it was all digitally recorded, you can always go back in time.
I don't think there's a limit, I think it, I think it goes wide.
It just run, it just, it just records, yeah. But if you're in a car, you can punch it up live. You can get live feed when you get in range, yeah. And actually, that's, that's really good. I mean, they could actually be sitting somewhere and punch in and just look around Howard Park and punch out.
That's right.
So, you need some sort of internet connection then?
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what they had originally been talking about, that's why I asked Bill today, it's like, what do you need from us? Because I didn't, wasn't aware of what kind of system was going in.
So, there's, there's, there's.
We, we got a pancake breakfast going on this, this next Sunday, so once we get done with that.
Oh, okay.
That's our next.
Yeah.
Project, okay?
Good.
Great, thank you.
And the lights, the Lions are taking the lights down this weekend, so that's very good too.
What lights?
The tennis court lights.
Oh.
They're all broken and damaged and dangerous, and, and a group of volunteers, volunteer electricians are taking them down this weekend.
They're not gonna put, I mean, so we aren't gonna have them late?
We're not gonna have lights, we don't wanna encourage people to go in there and pop quarters in the thing to have lights on the tennis courts, that'll just lead to other things. Dusk gets closed, period.
Item fifteen, Coal Spring Interrupted. This Coal Spring project of mine, I'll call it mine because it's become painfully obvious that it is, it is mine, started with the idea that there's this natural historic resource at, at the end of our road, and wouldn't it be nice if it was something more attractive? And I was inspired by the, the Coal Spring, by the Vermont Art Council grant that offered to help cities integrate art into their infrastructure. And it seemed like a perfect fit, so I applied for the grant, and we got the grant, and it seemed like we were on a roll, and then the, we asked the town, I asked the town to help us out to the tune of ten thousand dollars to pay for other stuff other than art to get the project rolling. And that was, that was turned down by the voters, and it was turned down decidedly by a vote of two to one. And after that, that happened, we didn't really have a way to move forward on that. People, townsfolk started raising questions about the project to the Select Board, which none of us really were in a position to answer because we hadn't really defined the project. And it became, it's become clear to me that the, the board does not support this project, the town does not support this project. I still think it would be a, a great thing to do, but something like this cannot and should not go forward with if I'm the only one that wants, wants it to happen. So, I'm making a motion that we give the Vermont Art Council their money back and set this, this project on a really far back back burner. Second. I have, I've talked to Steve Hamilton, the landowner there at the spring, and we've talked about maybe just getting out with our chainsaws and clearing some, some brush and tidying it up a bit and.
I mow it every year.
Do you? Oh, good, thanks. To, to make sure that the site is, is clean and attractive, more clean and attractive than it is. But it's clear that we're not gonna be able to build a park there and place a, a really significant piece of art there. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The motion to return the Vermont Art Council grant is approved four zero zero. Town Administrators Report.
Okay, the first order of business is the, the credit card, the credit card policy that was discussed last week. We need, and the addendum, need a motion to be, not last week, two weeks ago, that the board approved, we need that to be signed.
We approved it, we just need to sign it.
Yeah, yeah, you, or vote again to sign it, I, I believe we, the motion was to approve it.
We approved it.
Because then we can do this form from the bank, Judy has to attest that the board approved it, and then the treasurer and I get to sign this form, and we get our credit card. We'll have just what is said a five thousand dollar max, nothing over three thousand because that gets into the purchasing policy. If anybody would like to read this business card resolution form for the Town of Shasberry from the bank, it's.
Business Card Resolution Form for the Town of Shasberry Officer's Certificate Regarding Business Card Agreement Authorization. The undersigned the Board Clerk of the Town of Shasberry, the town, a municipality created under the laws of the State of Vermont hereby certifies that the following resolutions were adopted by the Board of Selectmen of the town at a meeting duly called and held on first day of June twenty fifteen, at which a quorum was present and acting throughout, and that such resolutions are now in full force and effect. Resolve that the following officers of this municipality, Dexter is hereby authorized and empowered for and in behalf and in the name of the Town of Shasberry, one, to execute and deliver to People's United Bank, the bank, a business card application for business purposes, the agreement, setting forth the conditions on which the bank shall on request issue Master Card, Cards, Credit Card jointly in the names of this municipality and authorized employees or other persons for use only in connection with the business of the municipality, and two, perform any act to execute and deliver all instruments and documents which may be deemed necessary to carry out the purposes of the agreement and these resolutions. Be it further, further resolved that each employee or other person designated in writing to the bank at any time for the purposes of this agreement by any officer named in the immediately preceding resolution is hereby authorized to use the credit card issued pursuant to the agreement in the joint names of such employee or other persons and this municipality, and to charge purchases for the amount of this municipality by means of credit cards and in connection therewith to sign sales drafts and on behalf of this municipality evidencing such purposes. Be it further resolved that the bank requested to extend credit to this municipality up to a maximum of five thousand dollars at any time outstanding with respect to charges for the account on this municipality pursuant to the provisions of the agreement. Be it further resolved that these resolutions shall have force and effect of a continuing agreement between the bank and this municipality, on which agreement the bank may rely, and this municipality shall be bound until the bank is otherwise advised in writing by one of the above-named officers of this municipality or by the majority of the Select Board. I, the Board Clerk of the Town of Shasberry certify that the above resolutions were approved by the majority of the selectmen on first day of June twenty fifteen. So, it sounds like we do need to make a motion authorizing the treasurer to make, enter into this agreement with the bank.
Yeah, I think that might be, be safe, I'm the. Yeah, I think that might be, be safe. Um, just because the motion last week might not have covered that.
That was a policy. It sounds like they want us to.
Yeah. Yeah, if you make the motion for Melanie to, to sign that, Judy will attest to it tomorrow and, and then we can fill out this other form.
All right, I move that uh, we authorize the treasurer uh, to um, apply for a credit card according to business card resolution form for the town of Shasberry and that uh, the clerk be allowed to sign the form. Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved four zero zero.
Uh, the next item uh, is with the constables. Uh, the constables are assisting us on the Harrington Run. It'll be uh, the state police. I've hired two sheriffs and the constables are also gonna help out. The constables have requested uh, permission of the board to purchase two like polo shirts and, and a hat, a ball cap, I'm sure. Uh, that'll identify themselves as constables so that when they're out there telling people to stop, people know they have some authority to do so. Uh, so with the board's permission, uh, they will make a purchase. I don't have a cost figure on it, but they, Paul knows his budget, so.
There's money in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve the purchase of a cap and a polo shirt for the constables.
Two, two, yeah.
Town of Shasberry Constable.
Uh, motion for Mitch to approve the purchase of a shirt and caps that say Constable for the constables when they are performing public duties.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to purchase shirts for the constables is approved four zero zero.
And as, as a matter of just course, uh, we're gonna look into uh, safety vests for them. Uh, they, they should, if they're going to do any kind of traffic work, they should have a class two safety vest. So I'll just uh, look at them from a police side. I know usually they're like twenty-five bucks.
We have those with the garage crew, right?
Yeah, they, they should identify who it is though.
Oh, that say constable.
Police vest, say police, constable, say constable. Just so you know who's telling you to do. You get different reactions from different people by what you're wearing. So just to, just, they should have them if they're gonna be doing any kind of road work.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just a.
Safety.
Safety issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is the dog list. And this is a warrant to the Shasberry constables. That needs to be read in and approved by the board so that uh, there's currently approximately a hundred unlicensed dogs here. Uh, that should dwindle quickly on the next step, which is uh, Judy sent two letters out. These are the nonresponders. And we'll move on to the next step, which is authorized by the adoption of this uh, warrant as it's called. So if uh, whoever would like to read that into the record and then uh, the board can decide whether or not to vote on it.
All right, town of Shasberry to Shasberry Constables, by the authority of the state of Vermont, you are hereby commanded forthwith to impound all dogs and wolf hybrids not duly licensed according to law except as exempted by twenty VSA section thirty-five eighty-seven. And you are further required to make and return complaint against the owner or keeper of any such dog or wolf hybrid. A dog or wolf hybrid that is impounded may be transferred to an animal shelter or rescue organization for the purpose of finding an adoptive home for the animal or wolf hybrid, for the dog or wolf hybrid. If the dog or wolf hybrid cannot be placed in an adoptive home or transferred to a humane society or rescue organization within ten days or a greater number of days established by the municipality, the dog or wolf hybrid may be destroyed in a humane way. Hereof fail not and do return make of this warrant with your doings thereon within ninety days of the date hereof stating the number of dogs or wolf hybrids destroyed in the names of the owners or keepers thereof, and whether all unlicensed dogs or wolf hybrids in such towns, in such town or city have been destroyed, and the names of persons against whom complaints have been made under provisions of twenty VSA chapter one ninety-three, subchapters one, two, and four, and whether complaints have been made and returned against all persons who have failed to comply with the provisions of such subchapter. I'm not sure I understood this second paragraph. Just saying that it uh, will keep, take names.
Keep track of all the ones we.
Yeah, that, that have not. And this is a, this is a, a warrant to the constables to uh, go and notify these people of what, what goes on. It's the, it's the normal status of this unless you assign it off to, to an ACO, uh, which we have not had uh, great prosecution of this list before.
Mm-hmm.
I would expect, and Judy expects, that many of these will be done shortly. When it gets to this stage, it's kind of like what Jim was saying about the water bills, you know, when it gets down to the last thing, you come pay. I'd also like to remind everyone that uh, while you pay at this stage, it is uh, going to be twenty dollars uh, with the fine, or twenty-six dollars if it's not a neutered dog, uh, compared to a hundred and fifty dollars after this notice period is up. So we reduced the fees this year. There is no, we've agreed not to go back. If you didn't license your dog last year, there's no piling up on fines. Just, it's kind of like start fresh here. Uh, you're already two letters late. So uh, there, there will be the penalty which makes it a total of twenty dollars instead of the seven dollars, I believe it was the board approved originally. So for the twenty dollars now, you can save the hundred and fifty dollars, which is the next step it goes to. And we're not looking for any past years. We're not, you can start fresh right now. Just register your dog, bring in the proof of rabies and uh, you know, that will start afresh from here. But if it, the next step is uh, signing warrants to the environmental court and uh, you're being issued a civil summons to appear in court. And that would be the much bigger fine of a hundred and fifty dollars plus cost. So this would be the proper time to take care of your unlicensed dog, is right now. It's still cheaper than what we were charging last year almost, so.
Have you spoken to Paul about this?
Uh, Paul knows about the dog list. Uh, it's part of the rules. This is the standard form. I don't know if uh, have, well.
The change is that we normally hand this over to the animal control officer and nothing gets done.
That's your option. I, I believe I'm required to present the, what the state law says, which is this. And then you can change it over to the ACO. That's, that's the board's decision. You don't have to give this to the constables. But I, I have to present it in a certain way. Uh, but it is the board's decision.
So when do they actually impound the dog? After the hundred and twenty-five, after this period, then the next period after the, they fail to pay the hundred and twenty-five, then we take them? Or is there?
Well, the hundred and fifty dollar, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollar fine the, the next time around. Because if you don't act on this, you can, you can just be, issue the summons. And then the summons, you have to report to court. And then the judge will take care of what needs to be done.
Pound the dog.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, uh, yeah. This gives authority to, to do all those things. Uh, that authority would, would transfer to the ACO if you wanna make it the ACO. Uh, towns do it both ways.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying it has to be the constable. It's just the wording on this. Judy has told me that this is often not signed. But this is the presentation that has to be made. Uh, it was her idea not to, just to hand you guys the list. I'm like, well, you know, the statute says that you are to get this warrant. It doesn't say you have to sign it, but you have to get this warrant. And my feeling is if that's what the statute says, that's what I'm gonna give you. And if you don't wanna sign it, I can hand the list to the ACO.
Where did they get the list for the dog?
Oh, that's from Judy. That's who's licensed their dog, uh, who has not licensed the dog this year, who has had a dog licensed in prior years.
Some of those, some of those could be dead.
Some of these dogs could be dead. Yeah, this is not, it may be close to a hundred names, but this is not necessarily a hundred dogs unlicensed. And there's other people who are just gonna walk in now and start registering.
If, if we give that to the constables, they go out and enforce some of it? They charge us by the hour?
Uh, pretty much, I would assume so.
Okay. So you could run out of budget money?
Oh, in like a half a day, half a day.
My pause is um, who's going to do all the paperwork to send a hundred and twenty summonses to people and then follow up on them?
Well, that's always been the crux of the problem with this is uh, uh, to sign the warrant, to sign the complaints, which currently would be done by the ACO. Uh, it's a most cumbersome situation of doing these complaints, sending them to the court and getting it all done because it's in White River Junction is where all the stuff is processed. And uh, very few actually get to uh, get into a court anywhere. The whole system's a little bit cumbersome. But the idea is really to get people in and we have to make the step at some point of actually issuing the summonses.
So they.
Or it has no teeth or nobody ever.
So this is for the constable to issue the summons?
This is for the constable to do everything that's listed there. The ACO, in fact, I can write a summons, you know, uh, because it's a violation of a town ordinance. Uh, but the, the idea would be have the ACO who has this quasi judicial character, uh, or that is leased is allowed to sign these, these summonses, or have a constable do it.
Where are we in applying for a new dog warden?
Well, I'm gonna have Tracy to talk to her about the position and where it stands. And we have about, reached out to a number of places. Uh, frankly, we're having a little bit of a difficulty with a pound keeper. I don't have difficulty with ACOs that don't have a pound keeper. Uh, so you know, when, when the actual bid goes out, which will be no later than the next meeting, or not bid, it's just really who are we gonna hire? You know, Tracy will be certainly in there after twenty-five years with her proposal and uh, what other, what are the, what are the, what other, yeah, what other, I can't even get that out. Other proposals come in. Uh, but right now uh, there's really a lack of kennels and kennels who are interested in, in this work. Which is a problem. So for the board, uh, that list has also gone to Tracy today, uh, just as the ACO, the current ACO.
Until the July first right now, so she did went to.
And you know, yeah, July first, she could still be the ACO or, so uh, you know, it's really just a decision. And like I said, Judy told me that boards have not signed this in the past.
And they have signed it, some have, some haven't?
I kind of got the feeling most haven't. But when she said, you know, she didn't, didn't think I should even bring it. I was like, well, what the law says, I'm supposed to bring it. So I'm bringing the warrant before you don't have to sign it.
I'm not against not going after people that haven't done their dog license, but I think this is gonna cost us more.
That's the problem with this is it's, it's a good thing for the constables, in my opinion, to be doing, just like the fire violations and all these other violations that we really are hard pressed to find anybody to really follow up on. However, they're totally unfunded. And that two hundred dollars, we just spent that on their shirts. So uh, I mean, honestly, so, I mean, you know, to have them do other things, it's, they're doing it for as, you know, and, and they're public spirited, but there gets to be the point of doing this is.
They could spend forty dollars getting a twenty dollar license.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they're not gonna do it out of the goodness of their heart.
No, I, I, I wouldn't either to tell you this.
We have to find it out of budget.
I, I don't blame, I don't, I'm not saying that they should. I'm just saying that this really isn't practical at this point until we.
Until we have a, have a better procedure for how to integrate the constable role into the town. Uh, because you know, it's even, it comes up with the fire calls I've gotten too about people burning. And it's like, you know, I don't really have anybody, you know, uh, could you call the sheriff? And that's why I tell people to call the sheriff if they, if there's open burning, to call the fire department. You have to get someone to document it. You can't call a couple of days later. And the dog complains too. And and this thing, these are constable roles. There are a set group of constable roles. But uh, again, no, would I, would I go out searching for a hundred dogs for, you know, I mean, I'd burn up my, that Whopper. Like I said, most of it's gone already.
Hundred dogs times twenty, would that be two thousand? So you figure.
You're not gonna.
Fifty percent of that or thousand and.
And yet, don't forget, that money isn't up for grabs.
Not a ghost.
Part of that is fees that are belonging to the town clerk.
Yeah.
So we're not even talking anywhere near that amount.
I mean, it's just, it's just cleaning up, making people honest.
I mean, we can take that list. Tracy has it and we can work on it from there.
How about publishing it in the paper?
We have sent these people letters or we have not?
Everybody has received uh, two letters according to Judy, I believe. Though, let me confirm that with Judy. But everyone's been notified. You get the cards at the beginning. I believe she told me that two letters have gone to these people. I don't know if that include that initial card. Uh, but this is the standard thing. Every year that list comes out, the unlicensed dog list. It has to be presented to the board at this meeting. And uh, this is just the statutory wording, which again, you don't need to follow. And I agree with Art one hundred percent. You can sign this thing and then we have no way of paying anybody to do it. So it might be better to stay the way we are.
Yeah, I mean, if we have the authority to go after these people, that doesn't mean we have to.
No. If you're looking for a motion, I say give that list to Tracy.
Okay.
It's already, it's already, Tracy already has it.
Yeah, it was mailed to her today.
Tracy has it.
You don't need a motion, right?
We don't need a motion.
Yeah, that's kind of automatic because she's the ACO. She's mailed to her.
Okay.
Okay. Then that's.
Yeah, I think we're choosing, unless I hear another motion, we're choosing not to act on this.
Okay. And the last thing is uh, I have a proposal for some construction work downstairs. It's under three thousand dollars. Um, as you probably noticed, there's no doorway to the clerk's office anymore. It collapsed there for all these years. Uh, what we had been talking about for, for a while is making that uh, a more fitting opening. So we asked for a proposal for a, a glass French door. Uh, and on the countertop, there will be a, a glass slider so that it functions as two things. First, it's a sound barrier so people can, can be having discussions. The second is uh, her office alternately it's roasting or it's freezing because the exterior door opens right into her. And also the fumes, one of the things that we looked at here, which is why I had the building tested, uh, was because she was complaining and other people have about different things. And it's really the fumes from vehicles that are five feet from the door. And uh, so the, the idea of this barrier is A, to replace the door that's missing now. But we'll frame out a regular door and then next to it on the countertop, we'll be built a glass slider so that can, you know, we can have these open and close depending on the weather. Uh, and also a little extension of the counter. So the clerks will have a workstation on this side of the, of the glass divider and the, the, anyone who comes to the counter can work uh, on their side. But it's really uh, environmental more than anything else. I wanna get an air conditioner for her office, probably about four or five hundred dollars. And one for the treasurer's office also, uh, because it gets pretty stifling down there. And if we're gonna close up the front like that, it'll, it'll, we'll need to exchange more air. But uh, it, it does a few things. It makes it, you know, it's kind of funny since the doors fell off.
Like the, the.
The little, yeah, yeah, yeah. The little, people have walked right up behind a desk to talk to her. People have pulled chairs up and sat down at the desk and uh, it's like, well, you know, we need to, there needs to be a little separation here. But again, most of it is, is just the dust. Uh, to try and cool the place, the doors open. This gets as dusty as a lot of the roads. And stuff comes in, the pollen comes in, which I feel constantly. And uh, so it's just, it's just a simple barrier. Uh, we got a proposal from Ed Shewell, Ed Shewell Construction. Uh, he's a Shasberry resident, a volunteer firefighter, has his own construction company. And uh, it describes what we wanna do here and it's for twenty-three fifty-eight. I didn't get this in the Dropbox because I didn't get it till this afternoon, but.
Okay, it says uh, project one, front entry. I will build a wall to divide the entrance of the town clerk's office. The wall will be built around the existing cabinet. It will have a five foot wide by four foot tall sliding tempered glass window in it. The wall will also have a three foot wide, full light French door with a lock.
wall will also have a three-foot wide, full light French door with a lockable doorknob, included in the prices, an allowance of $185, or a one-foot by six-and-a-half-foot countertop that I will install on the office side of the new wall, I will prime and paint all sheet rock and trim that I install, when I am done, I am, I will dispose of all trash and vacuum clean the area that I worked in. Project price, $2,358.
So moved.
Moved by Art, seconded by Ken, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve Ed Shewell to do the construction of the front entry in the clerk's office is approved, four zero zero.
Thank you. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any other business?
That truck is coming to us tomorrow, or is it going to DeLore's?
The truck is going to DeLore's tomorrow, and then it'll probably sit there for a couple of days until we can get our adjuster over there, and then he'll go through with, not Jeff, his brother, Dave, who's their expert on it, and anything that needs to be done is fine. We originally were going to have it flatbedded down here, but when Steve went up to look at it, he's perfectly confident that there's no serious issue to keep it from being driven down here.
Well, he'll find them, that's a good way for him to find them anyway.
Yeah, yeah, Steve and Dave are going up tomorrow, because they were the original two who went up to inspect it, and I want them to go back and inspect it completely, and we'll just take possession of it. The money's been sitting in a bank in Indiana to pay for this thing for months now, so when they pick it up, we'll just have a check sent to them, and then I'll be the end of it, and it'll be fixed down here, and then insurance will, will take care of the rest of it.
And, and DeLore's will start the warranty when we actually take delivery.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, yeah, we took, we took delivery, well, yeah, when this is done, then the timing will start, because so much of it has to kind of be recertified that it's...
Exactly.
I mean, the truck, I don't think has 400 miles on it, even though we're up to our second payment, it's extending the lifespan of this truck significantly.
There was some talk of trading in the Dodge, is that, have you...
Well, yeah, it's something that we're looking around at, right now, there's an option of doing something with the body of the Dodge, because we're into it a little bit. The one ton is on borrowed time, but it's because we didn't want to be spending more money on equipment this year, the Dodge would be a good supplement to that, it can take over some of the workload from it, so that we can still use it for plowing next winter, and we would still have six trucks to plow, but we're still kind of pushing back and forth on the idea. There's good reasons to move it out, and there's potentials for keeping it, too.
Okay.
So it's kind of being weighed over.
It's only a year old, right? Only had one winter or two winters?
Two years now, I think.
Two winters?
It's, I came here in November of '13, and it's been here since I've been here, so it's two winters already, so...
Question. When is the economic committee meeting starting up?
Soon.
Soon?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be going for a grant to look at downtown.
Nothing else? Review of action items, the only things I caught were the discussion up front about Elm Street, we'll ask Judy to check the records for what the speed limits are supposed to be along there, and David's going to talk to the sheriff about more enforcement, and we'll look at possibly getting more signage in there, and David, we're going to look and see about a well at Howard Park, and that's all I caught, was there anything else we...
Do you have any drillers in mind?
None, none. I mean, there's Frost up in...
Frost, Gould.
Gould, yeah, Gould, yeah, they're out in Paulette, I think. Frost, and other than those two, I don't really know of any. But I'll call a few and say, what, you know, what do you think, to start with, and...
Ask them to give you a by-the-foot and by-the-job price, too.
Yeah, well, overall, too, what do we have to do to even get started? I mean, I have a lot of questions, not much of a well guy, so I have a lot of questions, I have one that pumps water, that's all I know.
Right. All right, we need to discuss some personnel issues, so I move we go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.